Welcome to the regular meeting of the council in the city of Long Beach. Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, at seven PM. For the local council board committee, Mayor, Councilor, and Mayor.
Present.
Uh, Councilor Tristan?
Here.
Vice President Ginnis?
Yeah.
President Bennett?
Present.
The record of the county president of City Council, Donald Dean, Operation Council, Richard Harris, now salute to the plan.
Uh, let's count the calendar, please. Um, okay.
All right. I pray that ladies and gentlemen, United citizens, you will be on holiday with your family, spending one vacation on a yacht, in traditional liberty, because that's what we're all about.
All right, why don't we start with the city managers?
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm reporting to you with my quick. Um, first, I want to say congratulations to the group members that got the election to the council, to the city council. Uh, myself, as well as the staff working with you all, the new and the, uh, incomers. Um, Commissioner Walsh is our first, uh, speaker.
Good evening, everybody. Before I start this report, I've been mistaken last week for what I feel not bad about. My national night out would not have been anywhere near the success it was if it was not for all of the volunteers of the time who was Jackie Oder and her entire cooking food put in. All of that delicious food, she spent two weeks preparing all of that food and all the ladies that worked with her, and I practically begged her to give me the names, but she refused to give me the names of all the women that helped her. So our hats are off to them, and I wanted to just make sure that I'm being official. Thank you, everybody, so. The only thing I'd like to report on today is, um, the city has been experiencing, actually the country has been experiencing, an uptick in substance abuse and narcotics issues. And part of the problem that were happening here in New York especially is that, is that, um, the decriminalization of drugs whilst trying to serve one purpose has turned into a much less focus on drug enforcement across New York State and the rest of the country. As many people know, in Nassau County, uh, if you're arrested for drug use or you have drugs on you, you're offered diversion and the opportunity to get treated. While that can be a positive thing for the individual, it lowers the interest, if you will, on the part of district attorneys and funding opportunities to actually make a difference and go have an arrest for drugs and drug dealers. And the dynamics of drug dealing has also changed quite a bit, as it's not as much on the street where it's more like by appointment, it's all solo, things like that. So what we decided to do after some of the most recent, um, issues that we had, is we're gonna have a meeting, um, in the Channel Park houses, um, on November 18th. And in this meeting, it's going to be, um, it's going to be, I think we'd call it a no-nos prevention and response event. On November 18th, in the Channel Park houses, they have a community room. And we're going to be bringing in, uh, Long Beach Reach, they're gonna be providing a drug council and social work commitment and do some presentation on the prevention side and recognition side. Long Beach Ware is gonna be there, they're going to be doing some preventing, as will the Central Nassau County, the Council Services is gonna be there, uh, as well as the Police Department, um, spoke for my crew to the House of Authority, every single apartment in Channel Park, we've got a flyer going there, uh, the, uh, the city manager offices helping out with, uh, John McAllister, if you can help promote the event, uh, as well as, um, Monique, um, Powell from Community Development is gonna be helping us with some light refreshments as well, as well as our, uh, Long Beach Met Staff putting together a flyer. And what we're really hoping to do is start the conversation here in Long Beach to prevent people from overdosing on drugs. Uh, Ms. Kate Tormey, at the end of this event, will be giving a training as well in Narcan. So anybody who attends the event can get trained in Narcan, lead one doses of Narcan, so that if there have been someone in their family where they see somebody who OD, they have a chance of survival, because whether we are, we can't arrest ourselves out of this problem, but hopefully we can save some lives and we can make a difference in Long Beach, uh, story, this. Now, the plan for the Police Department is to push this also into the West End, we're gonna be talking with the West End School, uh, and school districts to receive, we can hold it there, as well as the East End. So we'd like to cover the entire city that way, and then as needed, and as received, start to do more of these events to create more of those. So does any care about questions from the council, or if we're having entertainers? That's the end, Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, last speaker is Commissioner Cooper.
Uh, yes, the city manager just asked me to discuss unfortunate, an unfortunate incident that happened at, um, River J.J. Evans Park. Um, we had approximately $6,000 in our community development funding that we had to use or lose, so we, uh, we thought we were best to buy equipment for the park. Unfortunately, they weren't paying for it, and we brought equipment that, and we had installed, um, and it was really substanding and easy area. And within two to three weeks, it began to, um, the slide broke, I think there was a seesaw that broke. Um, and I, me personally, I didn't feel comfortable with leaving it there, um, I just think it was equipment that is just not sufficient, uh, for public playground in terms of the utilization. So we removed it today. Um, each family's problem down there, we're all gonna try to use it at another location, um, it's probably more suited for, you know, very small, young children, um, just, it's just not gonna hold up to, uh, to, to a public park, um, use. So anyways, we removed it and we'll be ordering something different for the park, but I just wanted everybody to know that, and though it was a safety issue, and we took it down.
Okay.
Any questions?
Could that be, could that be the lighting over at, uh, Rec Center with, the Rec Center with D.C.A.?
Right now, we're evaluating potential locations for, it's a possibility.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner, do you know the timeframe of replacement, if the unit we're coming through with now, uh, does that, will there be any, uh, case files?
Right now, one of the things I now, I'll put down equipment is the safety, it's interesting, the rubberized surface that goes, and you can't put that down in cold weather, which really should be like 40 degrees at the horizon, so ideally, you don't want it to project this age or until spring.
Right, so you don't, except if you're going into the better life.
Right. Thank you.
Sorry, just a quick question, was there any warranty on the equipment?
Um, I'll have to check on that, um, that was purchased through Community Development, I'll check on that.
But they said we know, uh, we have called, Long Beach Council called company and want them to know that they have some standard equipment and what they're going to do about that.
Yeah, the company was, um, the manufacturer of UY reinforcements, that's who purchased it.
All right, Becky, move to Margaret.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I thank the Council, President, and some updated information about the Loop Parkway Bridge.
So, uh, Council, uh, Assemblywoman Miller, please forward, myself, um, Senator Kaminsky, as well as Director VMS from the Town and Hempstead, uh, have been in touch with the Department of, did you hear me? Have been in touch with the Department of Transportation regarding the Loop Parkway. There were a number of times when, as many of you know, when the bridge was stuck to the opposition, so we requested, um, a replacement of the existing bridge. And we received a letter back, I just wanted to let everyone know that the New York State DOT is working on two additional projects that will enhance the overall safety and improve the reliability of the bridge. Um, one is going to start in late 2021, early 2022, and it's going to replace that bridge deck, as well as make minor structural repairs in the year 2022, 2023. If anyone has any questions, please email me, or it can be called, be trusted, at Long Beach, Jim Wadeka. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and, uh, let's move on to the agenda.
I choose to take them off the calendar. I want as per the business of prior meetings on October 5th, October 19th, by 2021, whether it will improve?
I won't.
Second?
No.
Roy, Councilor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Ginnis?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
I choose to take them off the calendar, and please resolution authorizes the city to adjourn to a agreement with Engineering Systems and Projections and Transit Oriented Development Project.
Good evening again. Uh, this resolution authorizes the city to adjourn to a agreement with MP5 for Engineering Services for Transit Oriented Development Project. On Friday, June 25th, 2021, we received three proposals for the project, um, with a six-member committee evaluating proposals. Um, just to note, during evaluation, course is not factored in to the process when we get to the, that later, or by the second, uh, the proposed proposals provided in check with city, and for. After all our committee members graded proposals, the results are summarized, we need to open the proposed proposals. In this case, MP5 received the highest grade of MP4, and it's the highest rated proposal, and the cost was $108,000. The other two proposals that we received, one was submitted by Alcanyne Clean Associates in amount 14318, and the other was WSP at $100,000, $108,000. So they were actually the lowest proposal, in this case, they had MP3, actually, so it's a very close, you know, scoring. The scope of the project is to enhance vulnerability, safety, accessibility, and verification around more railway station, um, the city department will act similar to River J.J. Evans Boulevard, including the project is gonna be due, and, uh, you will be able to create the crosswalks and curb rides, pipe racks, traffic compliance, signage, streetscape improvements, funding, it's gonna be 100% arrived of Community Development Block Program. It's 370,000 miles available total, 108 is going towards the consultant, the balance, which is about 262,000, is going to, um, into construction. We recommend these, yeah, it's gonna be about a six-month period of design, so we'll anticipate commencing construction around May, 2023, or two years. So therefore, I recommend that we look forward to it, too, I think. Just to note also, they would have a consultant that is already in the tool box, some part of, um, I have very good experience with, I think, I do, we recommend it very good, so I recommend you work with them. Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner said May of what?
2022, I'm sorry. You guys say 2023, 2022. Sorry. Sorry.
Uh, as a part of the comprehensive plan development, would they be part of or organize publishing sessions as well, or are they certainly doing the, working on the document?
This is, this is the separate from the comprehensive plan, this is a more, um, this is the comprehensive plan, this is a separate, uh, separate project to just enhance the streetscape, basically around City Hall, the garage, um, well, whatever, um, revenue there, the whole lot, so it's separate from the comprehensive plan.
Sorry, I'm looking at it too.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Roy, thank you.
Sorry, Roy wants to kick me out later this night. I'm reading them off in my pocket. Have a look.
No problem. Any questions?
Okay, uh, any questions from the public?
Three minutes.
Yeah, Tommy, three minutes, stop it.
Um, John, you ask a great question, though, why do you do this part of the comprehensive plan? I mean, it really seems like it would be something that would, should be part of the comprehensive plan.
And when it's going to be included, but it's a separate grant, and so we apply a fourth grant to do just what we state, so it will be mentioned, but we can't, we have to use grant law for what we apply.
And we have to use this now, I just, you know, the, the reason I'm asking is because that, from what I understand, they do a great job with the comprehensive plan, and, you know, I'm kind of glad you hope to, because I think that people that are working on the plan should have the opportunity to present it to the public first. And I know, you know, I remember when Patty presented the last one, it was phenomenal, it was, you know, it was a great presentation, and people really had a, a good look at what was proposed, and that's what I'm hoping happens, is that we get, the public gets to look at it first before we start spending money.
The plan itself, it will be a document, and that the consultants will go out and talk to the public, and then they will present, this is a grant, so this is not something that the public can weigh in on, except we will explain it to the public, because this is what we applied for, so it will be included in, in the plan, but yes, the plan will go before the public.
Yeah.
They don't have, one doesn't have anything to do with the other.
Well, I, I just, in my mind, it seems that a comprehensive plan would include all of that, but whatever. Uh, but the other question is, we are taking out a community grant, $120,000 now, getting $120,000 for this, but we're only spending $108,000. How come we do the $120,000?
Um, Roy, congratulations.
Thank you.
And it's a separate grant, it's not, it comes through the CDVG, um, through the CDVG route, but it's a separate funding.
No, and I know, but in the, under the CDVG, it's coming, it's, uh, $120,000 you're taking now, and this is only $108,000.
Is that on a different page?
Yeah, I mean, item 10.
Item 10. I'm sorry, Roy, what was the question about? Oh, that's a separate, that's, so this item 10 pertains to the CDVG grant proper, and we're spending $120,000 of CDVG proper.
On a separate grant?
Uh, yes, yes. Yeah, the grant that we're talking about right now is a TOD grant, the grant that's in item 10 is another grant. It's two different grants.
But they're both going for the same thing, Transit Oriented Development?
It's two different grants where we apply for different items for both grants. We're not repeating, it's for different items for both grants.
But they're both Transit Oriented?
Yes, it's one, one, you can have grants that are all.
And they're the same thing.
Yeah, you can have, just like CDVG, Community Development Block Grant, you can have several categories within, uh, the CDVG where you apply for money.
I guess just threw me off, because they both are communities about Transit Oriented Development.
Grants, yes.
All right, but they're two different ones.
Two different grants, yes.
Late on, can you explain the difference, when, oh, nine, 10?
I'm sorry?
When we get to item 10, can you explain the difference?
Right, item 10, item 10.
Okay, thank you.
The, uh, it's two different grants, I know it does sound confusing. Initially, we apply for a special grant, which we received in the county of $150,000, and then working with the city and Monique, we have some CDVG funds to alternate that money, because our budget, total budget of the building is 370,000. $108,000 is for the engineers to design and oversee the project, and then the rest of the money will be used for the actual construction.
Oh, okay, so it's one project?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that's what I didn't understand.
And, and the other question you asked, uh, was about getting it done now, some of these funds have to be used up in the next, uh, 14 months, will be used, but, so that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the public? All right, same none, let's move on to item four.
I'd prefer to roll the issue rather than the city manager to purchase vehicles, or the city sanitation department, New York State Office of General Services, through the most responsible member.
This would be Ena and Jenna.
Sudan. Good evening, um, so this item pertains to the lease purchase that the city is planning to, um, undertake in the next couple of months. Um, Devin will talk a little bit more about why and the need, um, they convinced us during the budgeting process that it's absolutely imperative to, uh, bringing vehicles into the sanitation fleet, um, and, um, there is $180,000 budgeted there, um, for, for, um, the lease of, uh, this appointment, and, uh, we had worked with vendors that are, um, on state contracts and reachable, um, and, and the quotes in this resolution, they come from, um, from those vendors that, that have state contract, uh, and, um, in terms of the financing, um, once this is approved, I will work with, um, the units that the city is working with, um, to get the best available financing for the city.
Um, Ena, is, you mentioned $180,000 was budgeted? And we're using, it looks like we anticipated $123,000 roughly?
Um, I'm not sure, it depends on what the financing is for.
But this was something anticipated that was needed in this budget?
No.
I'm sorry, Mike, were you, what was your question?
It's basically, uh, we anticipated the need to replace these vehicles.
Yes.
In this 2021, 2022 budget.
Yes.
I just wanted to make it known that this is something that's not coming up unexpected.
I, I think, um, there's a broader issue here, um, this item four is also actually related to item five. Okay? So the first, uh, item four, you're requesting three vehicles for $120,000. But you're not, and the budget is $180,000. Yeah, I looked it up before I came.
Yeah, um, that's accurate, that's not, we're not purchasing the hard drive, we're easy to use.
Exactly, so could you explain to everyone how you are going to recognize the cost? You're not going to recognize a $120 this year against $180, you're going to recognize what amount?
So, yeah, once, um, once we enter into agreement with the financing institution, um, we have, uh, like for the mortgage, you have your mortgage and restitution, uh, there would be, let's say, five to seven years, whatever the, um, lease agreement would stay, um, payment schedule, and, um, based on the, uh, payment schedule, we would be, uh, same bond on monthly basis, and, uh, will be allocated between the principal and interest, it's basically financing, so, um, what, how we would recognize it, we would recognize it by, um, moving money from the sanitation into the debt service fund, and in the debt service fund, we would recognize the payments on the principal and the interest of, uh, of, of the equipment, of the lease.
So.
So it's a bit of a complicated, from accounting standpoint, transaction.
Right, so $120 isn't going to disappear from this fund, not a need for free cars, because we're going to be adding four more vehicles in the next item.
Yeah.
And you also have the asset of different capital, when you see the, uh, the vehicles?
Yes, uh, like government-wide financial statements, we would recognize the value of the asset and, um, as a liability, the principal, people, um.
And I, I do understand it is complicated, but your, uh, utilities may have disagreed with, uh.
Because we had a live board that, you know, during the lectures.
I just wanted to bring up that it is not unanticipated, unexpected, and the only thing that's not anticipated is that, uh, we don't know when we'll receive the vehicles, and we don't know the financing terms at this point, correct?
Absolutely right, the only unanticipated part of it is that we don't know the supply chain issues.
Right, thank you, thank you, Ena.
Sure.
All right, any more questions from the council? Any questions from the public? All right, same none, let's move on to item five.
I'd probably wish to roll out the city manager to purchase vehicles, for the city under the Homologa County Council.
Ena? Five.
Okay, so basically, it's the same story with the different vehicles. Why don't you talk about the vehicles that we're getting and why you need them?
I'm waiting to speak, so. We have four vehicles we'll be replacing, they are 17 to 18 years old, they have reached their life expectancy, so, I mean, it speaks for itself, the vehicles will, we'll replace our two 25-yard packages, real orders, and two 32-yard packages, and we'll purchase two 25-yard packages and replace two 32-yard packages. So, we're just filling in, but we're getting rid of, just making everything new. Two years ago, we replaced the six vehicles, so this is just carrying on from two years ago, so we can have a new fleet, we don't have to go back to these issues, and for the next five, six years, we'll be good. So, the pickup trucks, same condition, prior to Sandy, it's just time to start over, start fresh, have new vehicles.
Uh, I just wanted you to know, could you tell us, state your name, so we know?
Devin Fox, Super Tilt, Long Beach Sanitation.
Thank you, Devin, that's why I figured, let everybody know who's speaking, and, uh, I'm sure that they appreciate it. And there's a question for you, but I don't know if it's really, uh, in your area. What happens with the vehicles that are put in our service, like, they're all beat up, they're?
I mean, most of the time, they go out for auction, it's sold for, I'm not sure the cost of the vehicle for, they're still in running condition, but it is old, so, some will purchase them, probably some way down south somewhere.
For salvage and maybe?
Yeah.
Do, do that?
Exactly.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of issues to repair, so going new with the lease, everything's covered, warranty for 100,000 miles, saves money on parts, things like that, serious issues, you go back to the, the factory and they fix it, so that's a good bonus. With the last six trucks we got in 2019, they've been holding up really well, issues have been great, if they're serious issues, we send it back, they fix it for free, comes back to us, so it's been really good, so.
You're educating me, and I'm sure you're educating everybody else about the whole process of, you know, what, what happens on a day-to-day basis, you know? Thank you, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the council? All right. Let's move on to item six.
None. Public. Oh, you say, you say?
That was a, I thought you said for the public.
I knew he wouldn't do it.
What'd you say, Roy?
I knew he wouldn't do that.
I said, I said, Roy, that's a lady. I was thinking of that, all right.
Well, you put this thing as far away from me as you can.
Well, you put this thing as far away from me as you can.
Mike, really good point about the, you know, the recent plan, but do keep going.
Well, just working. But I mean, anticipating some questions you gave earlier.
You never do. Do we have a schedule for these replacements? Because I've noticed this with the police vehicles and stuff like that. And I know they're old, but do we actually have a schedule that people could see?
We're starting to create a schedule of all the old vehicles. And actually, I would say ninety, over ninety percent of the city's fleet needs to be replaced. And so we are, yeah, we have all of the information right now and trying to figure out how often we can start replacing vehicles.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, how many miles does a garbage truck do a year? There's another. It's what? But isn't it one key by miles?
Or if you all, the same part?
But do we have one key on your engine hours or just on miles?
It's like one is one thousand miles.
So strictly miles, no matter? But we don't know.
That's something that we can find out, but just so you know, we don't make any purchases of money anymore.
Oh, I know, maybe I was listening about playgrounds, but thank goodness we have one key on that. And the other thing is, and Karen brought this up, this money, the hundred eighty is going to be used to pay the leases. But we don't know if it's a five-year or a seven-year, if that's old. You've got to see what we can get, right? So, and, you know, I figure if it's a seven-year, it'll be back a hundred forty thousand. Then that money just stays there for, do we?
And it's two hundred forty thousand at four years, a hundred ninety-two thousand at five years, and a hundred sixty thousand at six years for all our vehicles in four and five.
Well, Ena said possibly seven.
Well, possibly seven, so I basically just extracted it out to make sure that the one eighty this year would cover the full amount of.
Can we use that, the balance of the one eighty, if we go seven, the paydown principle?
Basically, that would require us a resolution so that we can transfer the money on the council, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's just a lesser, and Devin or anybody, correct me if I'm wrong. In the past, the transportation of sanitation went to, I believe, Westbury. I think now it's going to Inwood. Therefore, the mileage, you get more miles, or you, it's required less miles now to go back and forth to Inwood than it was previously in previous years. That's correct, right, okay.
I was just curious about the one key, how long that would cover us?
Well, you asked about mileage, and you asked about hours, and I just wanted to point out that there was decisions made in the past that was discussed. How beneficial it could be to ranking the lifespan of a vehicle. I thought, so I was right, thank you.
You're right, you're right.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the public? All right, on to item six.
Item six is resolution to authorize settlement of social services.
Hi, good evening. This is a proposed tax, so we sell it for a quick red song, we are at six hundred and fifty-one. It settles eight years from 2014 through 2021, and there's a three-year moratorium. If it's approved, it's about thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars in cash settlement with a sudden reduction of thirty percent from fifty-six thousand, five hundred to thirty-five thousand. Myself and Jenna Patterson, my office did a walk through the property. It's pretty much been the same since thirties, nothing has been improved, it's in pretty bad shape. It is industrial property, certainly valued property, it's using comparable rentals from the region. And coming up with a value, negotiations came up with a park value of one million seventy thousand this current year. Seven, there would be no interest payments involved in the CDPG city. Plus an appraisal consultant and a legal consultant who are to trial. And the proposed account is still appraisable for much of us, the value that we settled. Pretty much covers it, any questions?
All right, any questions from the council members? You're none, any from the public? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item seven.
Item seven? Item seven is a resolution to authorize transit funds for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year.
Good evening, so the police department was working on trying to get grant money for the shot spot program, and we also wanted to work on the coverage area and improvement. So we were able to negotiate a low price for this. It wasn't included in our original budget because we're supposed to get granted for it, but the grant didn't come through. So what we did in the budget was, we took one, we was trying to go up one additional special for here. We decided to forego that for this year. Use a portion of the salary to pay for this shot spot contract. And the remaining two, the remaining money will be used for other budgetary needs. We're looking to increase our detective vision by two members as well. And we will still, with all of that being done, have about two, three thousand dollars left over. So we're still in range to go on, expensive than my current budget line.
Any questions? Okay, any questions from the council members? You're none, any from the public? Okay, thank you, let's move on to item eight.
I have a resolution to authorize the city manager to authorize.
Okay, so in fiscal year 2022. Okay, so in fiscal year 2022 budget, one of the revenue items is the appropriation of the fund balance. Basically, we said, you know, like, we're going to have some fund balance, I've had the fiscal 2021. We're going to use it in fiscal 2022 instead of raising property taxes and other issues. So that assumption was based on the fact that we were expecting a hundred percent of our bonds to be received by six thirty of 2021. It's about three point four million dollars, unfortunately, our.
Ena, you're talking about nine.
On this one.
Okay, glad to know I'm not the only one doing it tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks, okay. So this, I'm sorry, I apologize. This item pertains to the bonus donation of three hundred thousand dollars. So that donation was specific to the lifeguard department expenses. And in order to, for my office to reserve it appropriately, we need to have the governing body formal reservation. So out of three hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty, the department is planning to use this year. We will increase our operating revenues by a hundred and fifty, operating budget revenues and operating budget expenses in the lifeguard department by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And our governing body needs to reserve the remaining a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it will remain for the use of the lifeguards.
Okay, any questions from the council? You're none, any from the public? All right, thank you, on to item five, you may proceed, Ed.
Item five is also a resolution to authorize the project to the general public.
Okay, so I do not recall at what point I went back to item eight. I'm just going to go briefly over the whole concept. We anticipated a hundred percent of the American Rescue Plan money to be received by June thirtieth, 2021. This money going to the fund balance of fiscal 2021 should have been used in operation in this fiscal year. What happened, we received fifty percent of that revenue by six thirty, 2021. The remaining fifty percent will be received either in May or June of 2022. So we need to memorialize that through the resolution that the use of the fund balance is going to be redeemed. And the one point seven million dollars will actually come as federal revenue. This will allow us to have a lower reservation. We prepare financial statements and have that extending with the leading agencies. At the book, obviously, demonstrate what really happened.
I don't have a specific question on this particular transaction, but it does lead me to the point that I have not seen a cash flow forecast. And that is something that is critical for the council to have. And historically, things happen in the beginning of the calendar year, and I have no visibility into that right now. So I'm on the record asking for a cash flow forecast.
Okay, any questions from the council? All right, you're none, any from the public? Can we put a microphone here? Sit on the other side.
Never sit on that side, shortly you'll be sitting with issues.
I'm just not sure, was this the money that we're going to, that's going to help pay for O'Leary or O'Malley or whatever, the consultants hanging through you?
No, the money for, for the restructuring is from FRB.
FRB?
Yes. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We, all these values so far is three hundred, three hundred thousand.
Oh, FRB?
Yeah.
Hi, so we received money from FRB for product projects as it pertains to restructuring, we haven't received anything, yeah.
Okay, and they're not, right?
No, not at this time.
Okay, any other questions from the public? All right, same none, item ten.
The tenants' resolution to authorize annual allocation of community development funds for the 47th program year. And I believe we have an amendment, is that?
Yep, well, it's an amendment to it. The administration salaries line should be changed from forty-five thousand to thirty-nine thousand, six hundred. And the adult preventative services line should be changed from twenty thousand to ten thousand. Give me a second.
I will.
Go ahead, I have to worry. This second change was for twenty thousand to ten thousand?
Yes.
And it's on the last line, adult preventive services, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Second.
It's yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes.
That's where we're at?
Yes.
That's where we're at?
Yes.
Which person?
Yes.
Yes.
No, we just amended it.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I was good. Would you like me to explain, do we need to come over, or we should have published?
Well, you could just explain what we're doing. Great, I mean, I am very excited, this is the first CDPG grant that we have applied that is completely aligned with our operational budget, with our staffing model. MA department is kind of aligning to the expectations of it. And what you see here is now we have created youth and families departments over Magnolia's second floor to represent exactly what the goal says, youth services, senior services, and adult services. Previously, we had contracts of the two and B pages. And the problem of that is that it was detailed, but it wasn't aligned to the processes. Since we, Ena, we're able to align fiscal staffing model, identifying someone, like the people, places, and things. So the place that we have now is at Magnolia's second floor, that's where the services we provide initially to in the community. We actually have a location. We were, we welcomed the Nassau County Office of Community Development, the director, Kevin Creed, were honored to have him in the building, as well as Theresa Dukes and Donald Harvey. It was very important to have them here because they have to live a while. But they now have installed a new framework, and they wanted to see, and they wanted to talk. Because we had to talk about the balanced scorecard, probably use CDPG bodies. We have had expired contracts, we've expired funds that we were not able to use. We were outsourcing a lot of these services. When you outsource, you have organizations that are aligned with our process, our resolution, procedures, and everything. That considers the time, services wasn't a net, it wasn't aligned, and it wasn't transparent. As far as what is CDPE, who is eligible, how function these services. And when it's not clear, there's a lot of misconception that it was free money, grant money, and it is not. What the city is doing is frightening the money, putting money up front for the expenses with the hope of all the documents reporting and outcomes done effectively so that Nassau County will then review it and give us the money back. If you don't know, like I know, Ena wants the money to be there, or go because it should be. And that was the difficult part of explaining that, so that your funders want to know if that's what you're doing. So we now have changed that, we only have three sections when it comes to public service and even funds out, which will be based on the set of the needs of the community. We can provide self-recipient grants, we can do funding or contracts. But being that it's the city money that's going to be out, which is due in the first, we have to control how it's going to be. And this reflects that. In addition to the services, we have a high concentration on the parks, parks and figures. At Joe Brown Commission, I have some express, and Joe Louisiana, and the county kid. Also talk about what that park looks like. And with the new law of being outside is a priority. In addition to still, we have economic development and our TLD, which is a high priority for Nassau County Community Development as a general transit oriented. So everybody in the line of priorities, and we're flexible with the personal.
Molly, could you just briefly talk about parks and playgrounds, if it's citywide?
So in particular, that's a great question, maybe it's not a problem to play with there. We look into Magnolia Park, we look into Sherman Brown Park, and to continue, we'll leave more conscious parks in particular. And as you can see, it says parks and playgrounds, so previously we had specific addresses. So we don't have to do that because the overall criteria of CDPG is area derivative, low moderate income derivative, and it's determined by the city now. So we're interested that we have that, and I work in Nassau County, that we can determine that that area needs that benefit. So we don't worry.
Right, and I just feel the general public's knowledge in my office, you're just, when you apply for a grant, you basically outline and advance the needs in certain areas, like location and description. And then, Commissioner, this is what we said, you're applying for the grant, you may do the work upfront. And it could follow you with the grant application, the county will stack it, or whatever state or the agency that you can do according to what you ask for, depending on the given one.
Yes, I missed the fact, I think it's also more.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council?
The one thing I want to say is that when I first came, we had several hundreds of thousands of dollars that had not yet spent by the CDPG. Monique has done an excellent job. Monique has done an excellent job getting that money spent, asking for realignment. And what we did was we showed that we were transparent in our reporting. So to have them come out and to see that we are improving the way we do things and how we spend the dollars, this will allow us to apply and possibly receive more money than we have in the past. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any final questions to the council? There are none, any from the public?
Yes. The Sherman Brown.
Can you go to the mic?
Do you have anything else to say, any of yous?
Terry Towers, the Sherman Brown Park is after one on Pine Street. I would like to see that enclosed with some type of fencing where you don't see the recycling yard and the other stuff behind there. If you can get proper fencing where it looks very nice over there, other than just to see the bay area where it doesn't look too nice.
You don't have to say it. Thank you for that. The good thing is that now we're looking forward to how we make decisions and how we determine eligibility and funds and expenses. So we're gonna follow the same hatch you were dealing with, Leroy County or the other parks. So of course, the city has internal meetings and priorities when I line the funds and staffing. But we will now then go to the community, let the community collectively identify the needs, come together, and then have a meeting of the minds to determine the priority based on the funding and the reporting that I have to. So we look at as a whole what's needed, and I encourage you to help me to mobilize the community to then use that to express thoroughly what's needed. Because the Leroy County is just part two, it's already has started. So the first Leroy County was used in 2017, 18. So all I did was pick up from that, and I lined more funding than I realized were needed than additional funds were needed. The Sherman Brown came up because I was working to be down in the front page, as I always do. And Brian Horn saw me and said, hey, you know, we need to update this park. He had some ideas, however, I didn't formalize it towards the end and said, okay. I had the opportunity to put it into as a park because it actually meets the L2O. So it's not just making out Leroy County or the government neighborhood. It meets the requirement for CDPG. And I told him that we would revisit it if I get it approved. So the park was approved in the 47th, and we will follow up with the community needing. And I can only start, right, and welcome and create platform for the community to bring their voice, their opinion, and rate what they say is what needed. Understanding that it's limited funds, and that's how we're looking forward. And you can contact me in our office, if you don't hear about it. I'll speak.
All right, any more questions from the public?
James Towers, 95, East Fulton Street, on New York. Is any of this money going to go back into providing the security at the MLK Center? I know it provides the security at ICE Arena and Recreation, and they bring in a couple of million. And the North Park pulls in the majority of the CDPG funding. The statistical data stands right up. So did anybody answer that question?
So CDPG funds can only be used based on project description and law approved by Nassau County. Security is a salary, and it's not part of the 47th year program. So again, we're only using on parks and playgrounds. Senior services that align to program and services that we need with all seniors that are eligible in the community, with 51% of that being low moderate. I know you mentioned North Park, North Park is area eligible, so if any programs or activities go much around North Park, that's how Sherman Brown Park was able to be eligible for funds. But there's actually nothing here for security. We want to move away from salaries and more to developing the community as what the fund is set for. The city is now providing the staff and the salary, and if there is a priority, you're using salary. So if you're using something that you're positioning, they have to provide services to 51% of that population. And I have identified staff, we have a new staff now. We have a youth specialist, we have a senior specialist, and adult specialist here at the city. And that has been approved by Extranet Community Development. Security is not, it will be under public service. And we can identify a public service or good that being service, not using security.
Okay, so they just changed security, but they still have security at ICE Arena and Rec. And so the city is providing the staff of that. And the urgent need for security in the Montlu's King Center, again, was provides the majority of the approval, gets the majority of the community development funding, I believe, and as we said, we said we'll do a knee assessment. I'm just one person, many people believe that the MLK can utilize that extra service that Frank Edelson worked so hard to get with myself and others, to have someone at that front desk to help out and provide that extra security. Do community development, would they have been able to purchase the campus at the MLK Center? It's fixed now because MLK used that funding. And there's a lot of other things that need to be fixed there. So I don't know if.
So James, anything that's outstanding that needs to be fixed with MLK?
Yes.
As we begin to negotiate the lease, we will identify what the city will and will not pay for and with all the leasing payments. So those conversations will be picked back up within the next 30 to 60 days, and then we can put that in there. Also, you keep mentioning the ICE Arena. CDPG does not pay for security at the ICE Arena. And so you're asking us for CDPG to pay for security at the MLK, but she explained that it cannot, and it does not pay for the ICE Arena. So all of your concerns, you can have the executive director and the chairman of MLK when we decide to sit down and come together to discuss the lease, that he can then put all that information in there.
Well, they can do whatever they want, but I'm concerned citizen first, you would be brought out on that court. So again, I'm sorry, can I have?
No, what I'm saying to you, James, is I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
It will be discussed when we discuss.
Okay, so I wanted to go off record that they need security, and the ICE Arena do have security. I've worked with the city 23 years, I've been here for 44 years. The armed shirts that go in and out and provide maybe for some tournaments and things was spare for one, it's spare for the other, when that area pulls the majority of CDPG funding. And also, so they do go over there, and maybe take a ride to the market, see armed shirts that can pop in, pop out, that's security for that whole establishment over there, the whole recreation complex. And so also, you know, I have a lot of questions, but I can't get them all, because I don't know how much time I have left. But again, I don't know if some of that money's been designated to go to the MLK to help some of the programs there, because again, the North Park pulls in the majority of CDPG funding in the city of Montlu. So did any of that 47-year money, which was transferred, we had hundreds of thousands of dollars that wasn't spent, where the AC wasn't working, and kids were hot, and it was 90 degrees in the building? Was any of that money designated to go there when we discovered all this extra money and we were shifting and transferring funding when the children sat for three months hot? Some of the city council even came there to sweat, and I think that they came and they supported the program, but they even saw how it was. So did anyone go to say, we're gonna fix this? And why, if it's your building, would we discuss what should be fixed? If it's your building, fix the building. The landlord don't say, I'm gonna fix this, and then you fix that door, and I'm... That shouldn't even be a part of the lease. These are children that are in a low-income, poor area, and it should be that we're going to put money to take care of the low-income and the poor members. And then we say seniors are over at the recreation, what happened to the seniors over at MLK?
It's been a hundred times as far as.
Okay, thank you. So what happened with expedited programs and the recreation, which I love and I care about, Nevada to Maple, from the Bejeros, what happened to the program with expedited and working with them over there in the North Park area?
No, you know what, Monique, we just explained how we use our CDPG now, so.
You changed the way we use it, but I'm just saying.
We changed the way we use them according to the guidelines that we should have always been using them. So James, if you would like to come in and talk to us, we would greatly appreciate you coming in. We have had the discussion about the air conditioner several times. So I suggest that you make appointment with Mr. Pravizio, myself, Monique, and we can discuss. And also, please have your chairman of your board come in, the board, and the executive director.
Well, I'm not on the one.
Also, to keep note that maybe the upgrades improvements to buildings, what CDPG called public facility improvement, we've been doing that for a long time, which is one of some of the contracts that have been expired because of us being unable to identify the need and how it really impacts the community at large. This 47-year budget, a couple of things that you mentioned, is that the application was done in January or February. There were no programs, so the goal of this was to create a budget to provide programs, because no one but the city at the time, who cooperated with other things, couldn't provide a program, including yourself, because of the reopening and the safety guideline. Right? So at that time, this grant is developed, not to do buildings, no one was in buildings. So that took it to upgrade or to end it, and the city and the Nassau County understood that. So they wanted you to think ahead, which that's why the money is available right now as of September 1st, of what will be needed for the community at large post-COVID with the new norm. And it was provide services specifically towards the bank, outside the parks and playgrounds, and with services that they would need. As you see that, we have never provided adult preventive services. And we'll talk more about what was adult preventive services. You also talked about seniors. Seniors are also at the Magnolia's second floor. There have been some programs that they have been need based on a knee assessment. And they have a senior that's been at MLK that also comes from the recreation. So there are a lot of things you said to unpack that I wanted to say, but we, you know, do an accurate one, that I can ever, I'm trying to touch something, like you said. And security on the CDPG is not a service. So let's just be clear about that.
All right, just to answer back, and I know my time's up. You did it over there. You said we wasn't thinking about funding, and we didn't have it, but city all had two big air conditioner trucks out there. So we do air conditioning out here at City Hall. These are babies, these are children, you could have did it there. And if you see your programs over there, it's a lot to unpack, but a lot of it got unpacked on this side and not on this side. Let's unpack a lot over there. And yes, and Monique can talk a whole lot about CDPG funding, because when she first started doing things alone, each other worked with her, and she was with information. So thank you. Again, let's unpack some over there. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions from the public?
Good evening. I'm Cat Williams, from Chalk Park Homes. I'm a long-term resident of the city of Montlu. I agree with what Mr. Hart has said. What's good for the goose is good for the gathering. We have to do things right and fair in this city. That's what we always have been, and we need to make a sincere attempt to keep up that condition. There is something wrong. There is some fish in the house with a ice. I don't know where it is, but you understand what I'm saying. There's too much rain.
All right, any other questions from the public? All right, CNN, thank you, Monique.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item 11.
I'm 11, this resolution authorizing the city manager to end the contract agreement for asphalt alfalfa delivery on various occasions throughout the city on an anticipated basis. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement with motor worker head. Motor worker head, with the city's successful bid on the city's previous asphalt overlay contract, at a price of 495,000, which is to acquire this contract, was awarded for less than the bid amount, which was sworn in 32,378,500 in 2018. It was basically awarded at the time for the funding that was available in capital budget. In previous, it was originally awarded. There have been multiple resolutions authorizing the city manager to exceed the original resolution amount. This is the last infund for resolution for 41,524,000 since. This will officially close out the worker's contract and also have the three resolutions researched, through the numbers that were this was common practice to get authorization from the council to exceed the original bid amount on the farmer's contract. Based on available funds.
Okay, any questions from the council? Just can you hang more rules, that's good. There are none, any from the public? Okay, thank you, Joe, on item 12.
And 12, this resolution authorizing the city manager to file a grant in the New York State Environmental Facility Corporation for construction of the elevator storage tank for the city.
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing the city to apply for potentially accept a grant under the New York State Department of Facilities Corporation, Board of Infrastructure Improvement Act, for the board 425 million dollar elevator storage tank. Grant funded this program due November 22nd, 2021. This is a resolution to two members of the, filing the application. H2M is the contractor, a consultant who's taking to prepare the grant on behalf of the city. The grant matches 60% of the project amount, not exceed 3 million. In this case, the estimated cost of the project is 9,240,540. We therefore potentially receive 3 million through the program. The city responsible for 6,240,540. This will be available once funds are borrowed, permission to borrow authorization, 30,351,000 on September 30, 2019, amount of 9 million. So I try to make it practice in my tenure. When people say, I'll apply for a grant, I want to apply for a grant for things that were early. So again, this was a project, in this case, it's a, we won a title that was made design by Work and Model Consulting. It's probably been designed, completed in about a year. We previously authorized, didn't borrow the money for it. So it's a great candidate to try and get money for the project. Me and I, on this, to get to know right here, to do this, it's actually gonna be another, we're gonna have to have one more resolution before the deadline, which is at the next council meeting, regarding the secrete process, if you want to follow the rule act. We basically have to, this one dimension secret, but the next one, we're gonna have to actually say that we did paperwork for secret. And there's gonna be one more resolution before we file. Actually, there'll be two more for each grant, jump over the next. Any questions?
Okay, any questions from the council? There are none, any from the public? All right, thank you for answering all the questions I was preparing to do today.
Yeah, no, no problem. No, I know it's a little confusing, so I totally get it enough. It actually helps me with asking questions, I appreciate it.
Okay, and let's move on to item 13.
And 13, this resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for two grants from the New York State Environmental Facility Corporation for the construction of a replacement for well 16A.
Again, this is a resolution authorizing the city to apply for, potentially accept a grant from the New York State Department of Facilities Corporation, Board of Architecture Improvement Act, for 4 million, for replacement of well number 16, 16A. Grants on the program, again, due November 22nd, 2021. Then this is a prerequisite to filing the application. H2M is also preparing this. And just so you know as well, H2M has prepared both these applications, and the fee for them is $3,000, which evolved extremely recently. And that's why we had them prepare the grant. The way they explained it to me, the reason they're gonna do it so extensively, which is they're doing probably about 60 pieces, varies, depends how, just drop the line. So they're able to do it at a very equal price. So that's the reason they gave for it. So again, the grant, 60% of the project amount, not exceed 3 million dollars. In this case, the estimated cost, well, it's 4 million. We therefore potentially receive 60% of 4 million, or 2.4 million. The city responsible for 1.6 million. And this will be available as well. The grant that was authorized, our first resolution, 3, 21, on July 6, 2021. Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Questions?
I guess it's just worth noting, we get these, that's $5.5 million almost in grant money.
Yeah, it's really no worry. It's been authorized through, on the models, those resolutions. So anything we can get, how we do those costs is really important. And just so you know, it's $100 million available through this program, through the progress.
All right, any questions from the council? Okay, there are none any from the public. All right, thank you, Joe. Let's move on to item 14.
Item 14, resolution authorizing publication adhering to local law, and in some parts, see related actions related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local opt-in out of licensing and establishing on-site cannabis consumption establishments in the city of Long Beach pursuant to cannabis law, section 131. This item is a publication only here will be held Wednesday, February 17th at 6:30 P.M. Item 15, is a resolution authorizing publication adhering to local law, and in some parts, see related acts related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local opt-in out of licensing and establishing cannabis dispensaries in the city of Long Beach pursuant to cannabis law, section 131. This item is a publication only here will be held February 17th at 6:30 P.M. So voting? Item 3, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to contribute many different services in conjunction with transit for a new project, which just moved the adoption of this item. Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
That's where I'm made out. That's where we're trusted.
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 4, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase vehicles that city sanitation department, New York State Office of General Services, will be responsible for better. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 5, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase vehicles for the city, whether on a dog or a contract. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes, and thank you to evident the staff for helping to modernize a very old fleet that is in desperately in modernization. So yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6, is a resolution authorizing settlement of social organizations. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 2, is a resolution authorizing transfer funds for the 2021-22 fiscal year. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 22, is a resolution authorizing budget amendment to the general fund budget. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
I'd just like to thank the John Crowell family again, and I hadn't told you this.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 22, is a resolution authorizing budget amendment to the general fund budget. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 23, is a resolution authorizing annual allocation of community development funds for the 47th program year. Introduce move the adoption of this item as a matter.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Excellent work, Monique, yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 11, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to manage current agreement for asphalt overlay work, various situations throughout the city having ads on designated basis. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 12, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant under New York State Department of Facilities Corporation for the construction of the old storage tank in the city. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 13, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for two grants from the New York State Department of Facilities Corporation for the construction of, the replacement of well 16A. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second? Voting, Councilman Delory?
Could we just put the letter A after number 16, and I hope so?
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Item 14, is a resolution authorizing publication adhering to local law, and in some parts, see related acts related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local opt-in out of licensing and establishing on-site cannabis consumption establishments in the city of Long Beach pursuant to cannabis law, section 131. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Finally, item 15, is also a resolution authorizing publication adhering to local law, and in some parts, see related acts related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local opt-in out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries in the city of Long Beach pursuant to cannabis law, section 131. Introduce move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
City managers, open personal input before the city board, a motion for a meeting?
I will.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilman Delory?
Yes.
Councilman Rendell?
Yes.
Councilman Truss?
Yes.
Vice President McInnes?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, welfare, we want to go drill. So three minutes, and first up is Liz Knutson.
She left us. All right, voting my step.
I'm getting my steps in. Hello, Monique, item number 14, a little confused on that, is that a virtual hearing or not? I'm sorry. Okay, because it said that the public will be given an opportunity to observe and participate in the virtual meeting by registering for the hearing of Long Beach, New York, the council meeting, and further. So what does that mean?
It's not supposed to say that.
It's not supposed to be virtual.
Okay. All right, that's why I was confused.
Yeah, me too.
And now, and at that point, is the coalition going to be limited for three minutes? I mean, you're going to need to bring up a bunch of different people? Can Judy Viney make the presentation?
Well, we're trying to figure out, Mr. Lester, we're reaching out to different parties, including this Viney, to present. They say they're respected on, I have the hint. We have four things to study tomorrow, because we just passed this as a complication. So if you develop a defect, and see what this issue is actually, it's probably doing the same process with other people who want to, organizations, or students, whatever you may get.
Okay, can we?
Yeah, this, this meeting, this is the public hearing, I think, as part of the council. There'll be a separate, like, working session type meeting. We're also going to have discussions on this and get input. This is something that you're not going to get done in one public hearing.
I know, but we're on a very tight schedule.
We are.
Okay, that's one. And on the asphalt overlay, could we at some point get a listing of what's going to be done and what was done? You know, people are always complaining, and it would be great if they could see, hey, this is what we've done already, or this is going to be done, just to know already. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Crystal Lake?
If you don't want to stand up there, you don't have to.
That's okay.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Congratulations, congratulations, Mr. Lester.
Thank you.
I would just briefly like to go over a few things.
We can't leave, can we? Any helpful with the right?
No, but anyway, thank you. I would just like to take this opportunity to critically discuss the potential updates regarding the comprehensive plan. Going back, the documents that I did submit to the council and others, only the first page was new. The latter documents have been submitted repeatedly, time after time, after administration, after administration. And this is where we are today. So thank you for your advice. However, the city of Long Beach, second floor number, ran issued existing conditions and opportunities dated May 2005. There was one sentence within that entire document that brought me great concern. Roman rule 6-3. Mayfront redevelopment could create secondary gentrification. At that point, my heart sank. I am a victim of the initial gentrification within the city of Long Beach in the world. I've been here over 60 years. The heart and gut wrenching pain and sorrow that occurred via urban renewal, slum clearance, community development, was pathetic. Yes, there were a few homes that were deplorable, one that locked into deplorable condition. However, the majority of the homes were well-mintained and very hardworking people in that area. The displacement, I resided at 56th Harrison Street. I have a copy of the reverse certificate indicating my mother and father and their residents being 56th Harrison Street. I just wanted to say that for the record. So moving forward, it is important that the future vision is shared so it can accommodate the majority of individuals that live in Long Beach and consider it our home, such as myself. But unfortunately, over time, with the new developments, it did not meet the needs of all the individuals, of all the residents within the city. And I can say that for a fact, because North Park is considered Centers Track 4165. I believe it's block 1245. That was quite. However, census data was not updated for a very long time. So community development funds were utilized throughout the city of Long Beach. And to make this very short, thank you for the additional moments, I greatly appreciate that. The preferred developers at that time was Cameron Engineering. And their redevelopment plan was absolutely fabulous. It was. However, it did need some tweaking. So moving forward, I would hope that all present, future councils would take something of this nature into consideration. And, you know, hopefully, I want this place to begin.
Okay, so, so your time's up, but I think one thing that's worth noting, that's why it's important when the public input sessions are taking place, this plan, and people like you who have that history of what worked, what didn't work, in your case, a lot didn't work. So that's taken into account as this plan is being developed. Remember, it's starting from scratch, so they're not going back and re-in, they're basically reinventing the wheel, in a sense. So that's why, with your perspectives, that have seen what has gone on over the years, it will be important to make sure that those concerns that you have are incorporated into this plan.
I may reply, and you're absolutely correct, and you know I've done my due diligence.
Absolutely.
Okay, it's all of the research that I have required, I have shared over the years. And unfortunately, it did not benefit, you know, the long our community. I never kept any information for myself. I shared, and shared, and shared, and done this repetitiveness for ridiculous. And I participated, we are community rising, I was a community member. I contacted, I was in contact with the D.C., the federal government, I was on the EAD board. So all of that's come on. Okay, I worked extremely hard, just with many other individuals. So that's why I was like this on the record. Thank you for your time.
That's fine. And like I said, we need input from people like you when, as this plan is being developed, because you have that history that a lot of people don't.
And reporting back with your opinion.
And, and.
This lady, thank you for sending the information that you do send. But I can say, as someone that is not as familiar with everything you've been through, I'm having difficulty in understanding what you want me to focus on in the documents that you send me. So maybe some bullet points as to what I should be paying attention to in certain segments, or sections, or paragraphs, or basically a summary of what you want me to take away from the documents would be extremely instructive. So basically, you know, I appreciate you educating me on the topic.
Okay, that has never been a problem. Over the years, there were that specific information, and it should be in touch somewhere. But I would be forward, I would be happy to pinpoint everything.
Yeah, so, you know, I get the documents, and I get, here's the documents, but I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing with the documents, just reading them, or is it?
Well, to have a better understanding, you can review them. If you do take a look at them, you can see the changes within the history of the city of Long Beach. That's one point.
I would need a primer performer of, basically, here's this situation, here's the history, and on your weekend, I recommend, in this order of priority, the documents that you should be reading to get up to speed on this issue. That would be helpful to me.
I would like, I don't mind the things I want to say, is that I will be in contact with you over the next couple of days, so that you and I can meet and sit down and talk about some of the things that you have sent over. And maybe we can come up with something that we can go give the council so they can read, but I also need your input on a couple of other things. And so I will be in touch with you. All right, thank you.
I'd like to ask this lady one question, dear. Can you briefly explain what you like?
Can you briefly explain what you liked in the Cameron interviewing proposal that you had mentioned?
Well, the amenities were fabulous.
Such as?
Uh, they had the, um, the computer, uh, they had the...
This was in the, okay, I understand, this is the draft copy and some plan of Bayfront Development that was...
Well, there was a presentation by Cameron Engineering, I do have those documents.
And the computer, but, um, but as far as...
The, the problem was that it was targeted, the targeted population would have not have concluded low to middle income. Right. Okay, and that, and what I find also problematic, and it's just my opinion, and no one has to agree with me, when you target a population such as individuals, let's say, students, seniors, but if the project is done properly, it should meet the needs of students, senior, seniors, um, excuse me, students, individuals, seniors, across the board, and families. A school could apply to a senior as well as a, um, student or senior, so a lot of those things would have worked well, but depending upon your affordability criteria, that's also a problem.
The other, the other concern, I, at least I had, might have gotten this particular issue, but I remember, I think in January of my first month in, in office here, there was a plan that evidently was talked about, that you had mentioned, you never even heard about.
Okay, which, what's...
It was supposed to be community outreach and getting things out there for the, uh, to get community feedback.
Oh, well, part of the problem is, is that a lot of individuals might not have computers. Um, sometimes they do post bulletins, and I know for myself, sometimes the bulletins are knee-high, so if you're driving, you know, you really don't get a glimpse of it. Um, I would suggest that a database be created, which is available already, utilize a phone, 'cause most of everyone has a phone, so if there is a meeting or something that's extremely important, be sent out.
So, if, if it's, what, what I basically try to ask is how can we, as the city council, city government, city manager, communicate to get the message for, for example, if there's a meeting coming up, or if you would like to have a meeting to get information for the, for the community on a topic, that's really the charge that I had to communicate.
Okay, so, a lot of times the information is posted on Facebook, sometimes people do not utilize Facebook. Honestly, it's old school.
Old school, that, what, not...
Not the answer, then, for the comprehensive plan, part of the plan is to look at different ways to get the word out, um, that we would have the meetings, and it's not using the same techniques as we are using now. So, we could talk to Miss Lake, but we will be talking to others, so we're not talking about just posting it on Facebook, or posting on the website, because not everybody has a computer, not everybody has Facebook, um, and we are also going to do it by areas within the commu, within Long Beach, so that no one area will be concentrating on. So we are looking at all of that, on how to get the word out, and how to get the community involved.
Thank you, uh, Miss Lake, and, uh, because I know she knows how to get the message out of the, this comprehensive plan, the draft update, to get all members of the entire city of Long Beach to weigh in on their needs, and, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, Jane Taj.
Jane Taj, 95 East Local Street, Long Beach, New York. Uh, one thing I would like to say is that, uh, Crystal is a true historian and knows a lot of information and have a lot of documents. Some set, point to certain things that you may want to see, Vice President, the certain things is that she was kicked out to gentrification, that's the main thing. Certain things is when mobiles were built, all those families was gentrified out, kicked out, that's another one. The main points is, we're looking to do something in that community, but it's good to be at the table, reveling on the meeting, it's good to be a part of the plan, and that the plan be made without you, because you won't be a part of it or in the plan. We've seen gentrification over and over and over, and we don't want it anymore, and that's the simple thing about the Bayfront, and whatever takes place there. Why would we start over from scratch, when John Bendo, you was a part of many of the chart meetings, and we met all over town, walking street to street, we met and then, okay, we met. Yes, we could come up with ideas and edit some things, but the in-depth study that we did, why would we, when we spent thousands and thousands of dollars, throw that out the window? When we had lots of the minority community, yes, people from Nevada to Bay or the Bay, Bay to the ocean, but it's gonna adversely affect, depending upon how it's done, the people that's right there first, so those should get priority. Yes, the city need more revenue, you know, they got three unions, and we understand that, cities, things go up, so you gotta find new revenue, 'cause if you raise taxes, might they kick that off of you. But don't keep those people out of office, 'cause I live in North Park, and I love my North Park. I may not have sand in my shoes, but I got some, I got some, I got some dirt from the bay, that's what I could afford, I couldn't afford the beach back in the day. So I got hope, it's for going in the bay, said, "Mom, I need to go to the bay," but she saw the water on the bottom of my pants, I never knew how she knew every day until I started pulling my pants up a little bit, so I didn't let her know I was in the bay. So, that's it, read those documents, and it tells you all the in-depth studies that we did, and all of the voting that we did, and all of the meetings we did all over Long Beach, 'cause there wasn't a ornament in North Park, there was a ornament lit up, remember that, there were donuts all over, and we, 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 we fought to meet at the center. Patty Vaughn right there, she got a lot of documentation, right, Patty got all that documentation. We got it, we can just add a little bit, but Patty, she, she, she been doing planning for that sort of time, for years, she been doing it, talking about it, because she's part of the plan, you know, so, I, 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 I hope that we don't just throw all of that out, because I thought that he just said we only doing a few things to add on to the comprehensive plan. So I finish with this, that's that about that, and Crystal will give you all of it. I finish with this, that I came to speak personally about the community, the city, the police department, the community, the pastors, the organizations coming together to fight against this pandemic of drugs and parents being killed by, by the sickness that they deal with. It's not necessarily that all, but it's a risk when you are taking drugs, it, it, it hit my family now. Now, there's three mothers from two blocks that are guarding about fifteen kids that are motherless because of maybe some things that they were dealing with with their sickness, and I haven't heard a outcry, and so I'm, I'm crying out loud now, because while I hugged my nephew or my nieces, and their mother just turned thirty-five Monday, and, and I burned it was Monday, and I, I hugged her and I'm crying, saying, "Where's mommy, mommy coming to blow out the cake?" So I'm here calling, and saying it's not the city's fault, it's not the church's fault, it's, it's not even the addict's fault, it's dealing with the sickness of drugs, but what can we do together? I don't know if, if I heard, that we may not just, we don't want to rest our way out, but some people need to go to jail, I cannot sit and let the nineties, the late eighties, early nineties of Long Beach come back. I, 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 I'm on face the line, and this line being, I want everybody to know, I've been threatened before, because drug dealers will not take over Channel Park Homes, drug dealers will not take over Long Beach or wherever you are. I'm asking the police department, and the churches, and the community groups to step up, Mother Louie's fought hard to get Channel Park Homes, with many others there. And so I finish by saying that I called the task force of Nassau County, I called Long Beach Aware, I will be walking down the street, drug dealers will not take over my community, they will not, drug dealers will not take over my community. And I'm saying what I'm saying, and I, and, and, and the things about the MLK, listen, some people may think it's a lot of wrong, just because maybe somebody black is not complaining about, I know we got a black city manager, and a former MLK director, and, and, and community director. Yeah, yeah, I'm not, yeah, they, they, they are, they're American, they may got charity somewhere in there, Miss Don probably got charity, if you believe, but, but what I'm saying is that injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere, and it's not who's presenting it, I don't care that Donna is black, I don't care that, I love them, no matter what color they are, but they're put on the front street to present what goes in and out of the center, and this is the worst that I've seen the center treated. Look, in my history, the center was built on my yard, that was my yard, I was a kid that played on the hill. So again, I thank you for allowing me to go this time, what I'm saying, and I want everybody to know, drug dealers will not take over, drug dealers will not take over our community, we will stand together, and if those that don't wanna, give, listen, we're gonna bring people in that wanna give jobs out, we're gonna bring people in that wanna help and, and rebuild people's lives, but we will not just sit and take this, my nephew died from gun violence, and we're still hearing gunshots and gunshots, and they said that the cameras were not working in Channel Park, I'm fixing the cameras, I want them, do the cameras take the fix, they said the cameras wasn't working at the center, we put the money in to fix the cameras, because it's a, it's a pandemic going on, and nobody's crying out. And so now I'm getting ready to leave here, and I'm getting ready to go to my nephew or my nieces, and I'm driving them to school in the morning to talk to their principals about their mother being gone. Fifteen children in about three months that don't have a mother, and I'm saying, I don't know what the narcotics squad is doing, the youth, or whatever they're doing, but I'm asking, and everybody, we gotta stand up together, we're not going to accept it if you're shooting in the community, if you're going to have to find another occupation, because I'm not gonna stand, and I've been quiet, and I've been going to other community working, but you know what, you go see me more here, 'cause it's a teamwork, we gotta do this together, and I'm saying you can't arrest your way out, but we have to find solutions and meet together, and we're gonna have a meeting, and I'm gonna ask the board if we have a meeting, in, in Long Beach Aware, and Renegades from the District, to turn it off, we're gonna try to have a meeting in the community and the center, it's not just in North Park, but it's all over the country, but I'm not gonna stand. So thank you for your time, we're gonna work together to bring this pandemic, another young lady from the community is there, another young lady, and so again, I can don't just go out to my family and all those families that are dealing with people that have this sickness, let's try to give them help, and let's give them good solutions, not just narcine, that, that's not the answer, that's part of it, that can reverse the effects of certain drugs, but let's come together and get more stronger solutions, the city, the government, the churches, the rabbis, everybody, us together on this scenario, y'all bless.
And, uh, that's it, folks, thanks for coming, and we will see you next time.